Good evening, everyone. I'm called as Committee of the Call meeting to order here at 6:00 PM in Council chambers. Don't believe we have any electronic attendance, so we start with our oath of office for regular commission appointment of Luis Louis. Thank you. Butts to the rank of police officer effective yesterday. Chief call.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, certainly a very joyous occasion today as we welcome Louis Butts to his end of his probationary period. But just a little bit of a background, we hire a police officer in the city of Moline. They would either serve a one-year probationary period if they're a certified police officer or an 18-month probationary period if they don't have any prior law enforcement experience. So, once an individual completes that 18-month probationary period, they're eligible to be promoted by the Police and Fire Commission to a full commission police officer. And so, that's what we have here today with Officer Louis Butts. If Louis, you want to come up here with me? So, Officer Butts is a graduate of Moline High School and previously worked for UPS and Valspar. In 2015, he joined the Illinois Department of Corrections as a correctional officer and served there from 2015 to 2019 where he achieved the rank of Sergeant. He was hired January 4th of 2022 and has served on all three shifts and is currently assigned to Second Ship Patrol. Louis has done a phenomenal job in his time here at the Moline Police Department, and we're really excited to see how his career progresses over the next few years. Today with him, he has his girlfriend Kaylee, who is also a police officer, and Sylvus, and a future Moline police officer. I did have to make sure that we know it wasn't going to go to Sylvus. So, you signed a letter of intent.
Got locked in.
So, Alma and Brian, you'll probably still be here on the council. You'll probably see a couple of kids grow up to be police officers.
Prolong life in many ways.
So, Mayor, if you would, I invite you forward to issue the oath of office.
Right if you want to, you can spot your side. Are you? He would just repeat after me and raise your right hand. I, Louis Butts.
I, Louis Butts.
Having been duly appointed as a police officer.
I've been duly appointed as a police officer.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
The city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of police officer.
Of the position of police officer.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my book.
According to the best of my book.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Just get a mill there. We'll get a family photo for your Christmas cards.
All right. Our next item, our mayor's board appointments. The mayor's appointment of Sam Meyer to the Plan Commission for a full six-year term to expire June 30th, 2029. The mayor's appointment of Alan Silas to the Plan Commission for a full six-year term to expire June 30th, 2029. The mayor's reappointment of Butch Trevor to the Plan Commission for a full six-year term to expire June 30th, 2029. Mayor's appointment of Charles Lawl to the Special Service Area Six Board for a full three-year term to expire September 30th, 2026. Mayor's appointment of Nick Holkey to the Special Service Area Six Board for a full three-year term to expire September 30th, 2026. And the mayor's appointment of Justin Smith to the Special Service Area Six Board for a full three-year term to expire September 30th, 2026. Any questions? Hearing none. We move to our next item, the proclamation for Eric Griffith, Director of Parks and Recreation, to declare the month of July, 2023, as Parks and Recreation Month. Would you like to say anything first?
Just want to say thank you. This past year for Parks and Recreation has been one for the books, and we've got a lot of different projects going on, and I think that says a lot about this council and the previous council and this mayor and city administrator for the quality of life and place that we're trying to provide in Moline and really looking forward to the next two years especially. We've got a lot of projects going on, and I think it just shows what we're trying to do in Moline. So, thank you.
Thank you. Proclamation reads, "Whereas Parks and Recreation facilities and programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Moline, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas our Parks and Recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas Parks and Recreation programs increase the community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses and crime prevention, and whereas Parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Moline recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources, now therefore I, Sangeetha Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim July 23rd, excuse me, July 2023, as Parks and Recreation Month." Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Congratulations on the work you do with your team. Chief, is there a public comment this evening? Okay. And just a reminder for all, public comment, we have a three-minute timer that Chief operates up there.
Ready? Yeah. All right. I got a timeout, so hopefully I'll be all right.
Hello. My name is Andy. I'm the Regional Manager for the Indiana, Illinois, Iowa Foundation Fair Contracting. The Triple I FFC is a labor management organization that's funded through participating contractors, established to support fair competition, improve labor conditions, and eliminate unfair and unethical practices in the construction industry. To that end, I'd like to bring to your attention the Ben Butterworth Parkway Rip-Rap Placement Project. The winning bidder submitted a contractor certification, which is required in the bid packet. The contractor certified that as, that they quote, "As provided in paragraph four below, the undersigned bidder certifies that it is a participant either as an individual or as part of a group program in an approved apprenticeship or training program applicable to the type of work or craft that the bidder will perform with its own employees." A follow-up email by the Parks and Rec Director post-award uncovered that the contractor did not actually participate in an apprenticeship program. When this was brought to the attention of the city's legal council, the response was that the items contained in Moline's responsible bidder ordinance are not actual requirements, but rather just items that the city may consider. While I completely understand the city's position, I fear that this creates an unfair advantage for contractors that do not invest in workforce development. Furthermore, the invitation to bid states that quote, "Also included in per-ton price is the utilization of mats or protective material to protect the existing services along Ben Butterworth Parkway." I have some pictures for you. I don't have flowers, but I have pictures and kind of some stuff for you guys to look at that I'll hand out. As virtual lifelong resident of Moline, I love the city. The work done by this council and mayor have been extraordinary and restoring Moline's faith in our city. The city and its people deserve nothing more but the best, and that extends to the work being done on their behalf. I have some handouts for you. Take a look at them. They're pretty.
Thank you. Is that all, Mr. Wait? Okay, you made it under three minutes. Thank you. All right, next?
I reside at 2375 19th Street. There has been an ongoing project at my house that's still incomplete, but you'd probably like a small sample of the bouquet of flowers that City of Moline is growing there. Every day that I drive by it, it reminds me of how inappropriate an eight-foot sidewalk is through somebody's property. But more than that, I'm outraged by your lack of competency and your ability to complete the project. Four, six weeks ago, I'm not sure when it was, City of Moline employee and one of your contractors stepped on my property without giving $48 notice, which was agreed to well over two years ago. They're trying to seed my property by digging in a bag and throwing seed on the lawn in the wrong time of the year. You've tried to do it twice now. It's going to take at least a third to do it right. When are you going to get it done? And when are you going to stop harassing me?
Sir, could you say your full name for me?
You know who I am.
Oh, I don't. I'm sorry.
I've been here before.
I don't.
Ask somebody.
All right, Chief, you want us to have that written down? He'll follow up with you. Thank you. All right. Do we have another public comment, Chief?
Not assigned.
Is there anyone in the audience for public comment? Please.
Good evening. I'm Heather Calvert with the Butterworth Center in Dear Wyman House, and speaking in support of our appeal for a special event, which is 17.6 on your agenda this evening. This will be our third year hosting our porch party in September, and last year we had about 750 guests over the course of five hours. When we put in our request to the Special Events Committee, it was declined based on concerns for security. The suggestion was that we would host some food trucks, which we would normally use on the half-block that we requested for the street to be closed in our parking lot. Because we are in a community setting, that's going to put a lot of stress on street parking for our neighbors, which is something that concerns us, and also we would be trying to use that space for parking and for the food trucks, so also pedestrian concerns. We want to make sure our guests are safe, so we just hope that you will reconsider and hopefully approve our special event pass. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience?
Heather Calvert.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to questions on the agenda.
Your Honor.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Just want to verify that 15.10 and 15.12 will be.
Yeah, I'm about to go through all these. Thank you. So, there are some changes this evening to the agenda. Items 15.5 and 15.6, as well as 15.10 and 15.12, are being pulled from the consent agenda to the non-consent agenda for discussion. There is a Scrivener's Error found and corrected for Council Bill 3002-2023, which was adopted on 1/24/2023. The language within the ordinance said Marshall County, and it was corrected to Rock Island County. I also am going to be switching the order that we're considering to of those special events. We're going to put 17.7, excuse me, 17.7 ahead of item 17.6. And then, just for your knowledge, the clerk has been looking up just common practices for how we're creating more efficiency, streamlining without sacrificing public knowledge, and so she's looking into a potential new tradition or new way we could do things where since we print all of our consent agenda items, we print all of our consent agenda items on the agenda and we have it on the screen, it's possible to use wording without having to reread every single item. But that's not for tonight, but it's something we're checking on legal status of that. It does happen in other places do do it that way. So, for nights like tonight where it's a huge consent agenda, it might be a very appropriate thing to use since we do make so much of the consent agenda available already. But more to come on that. All right. So, now we are at informational. Mr. Lodi, Thermal Energy Storage with Jim Johnson from Train USA Inc.
Good evening, Your Honor, Council. Staff has been working to advance your strategic goal, which is to pursue and investigate environmental best practices, and we've been working with one of our heating and ventilation contractors, our partners, and we have a presentation, a representation for you tonight on a clean energy concept. And Train US has come to us tonight, and I'll introduce to you Jim Johnson. He's going to talk to you a little bit about thermal energy storage and some potential funding opportunities for a project with us.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, Senior Counsel, City Administrator Vitis. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to present to you all this evening. My name is Jim Johnston. I'm with Train Technologies. I'm actually based out of St. Louis, Missouri. Easy four-hour drive coming up here. Just dodging a few semis here and there, and luckily no windstorms from the last time I came up. Tonight, what I wanted to talk to you about essentially is three things all around with one central concept, and I want to make sure that we don't get too deep into engineering. All we want to be able to talk about is what opportunity is presented at the Water District right now, the way it currently resides. And then, I'm sure none of the council members want to go out and learn all brand-new acronyms, all the brand-new legislation that continually changes every single day and is always in the news and seems to countermand itself sometimes. I want to talk about one of the biggest financial opportunities that is easily applied to the Water District, and then just talk about a few of the next steps. So, let me see if we can do this here. It wasn't rubbed up. So, I want to talk about first, what is thermal energy storage? Talk about the Inflation Reduction Act that a lot of people hear on the news, but nobody really knows how to be able to apply a lot of the federal largesse that's come down from the feds to state or treasury, and then how does it properly apply, and how do you make sure as people that are entrusted with the public's trust to make sure those funds are properly applied and all of the regulatory requirements are met? And then, last, we're going to brush over this because I'm actually going to be dealing with Director Lodi and his staff to be able to provide this council kind of next steps and some of the contractual agreements that we'll talk about in a panel meeting. So, first and foremost, what is thermal energy storage? Again, please bear with me because I try to keep this as basic and smooth as possible. Thermal energy storage, as defined by the feds currently, is a way to be able to use a thermal medium, water, the ground, if you all have ever seen Geodele, the whole pumps and houses where you dig a big well, use all the groundwater that's down there for heating and cooling. We're talking about the exact same concept, is how do you reject heat or add heat into a, essentially into a medium to provide air conditioning or some sort of energy source. Easiest way to be able to say it is there's a heat sink, goes a way to be able to store it. Those two can be combined and then to a heat source. How do you distribute that thermal energy, whether taking heat out or adding heat in? This is a little bit more of a detailed example. This is how typically thermal energy storage system works. There's some mechanical pumping that ends up happening, some sort of mechanical mechanism to be able to take heat out or put heat in, and how do you apply that instead of, say, in this building here where you probably have DX package units or a chiller where you're using the water or gas to provide heat and cooling? This is actually using existing infrastructure and water or groundwater or some other medium to be able to provide your air conditioning. To give you all some context, so Train Technologies were one of the largest HVAC contractors in the U.S. My responsibility is to go around, essentially all in the Midwest. I spend a fair amount of time on airplanes and the car and listen to a lot of audiobooks, dealing with public entities and how to be able to best apply the new technologies with the financial benefits that are out there, whether they be state, local, state revolving funds, individual incentives, and then figuring out the right way to be able to process that, apply it, and protect you all's interest, and most specifically the taxpayers. We do these things on a daily basis where we help entities, whether they be public or private, save energy, hit their climate goals, look at decarbonization, look at every way to be able to essentially protect all the legacy for our children and grandchildren and everywhere else downstream to limit the consumption that is essentially inherent to the system that we have for how we process goods, how we provide services to the public, and then how do you do that more effectively using technology? So, this is where it gets really interesting. To give you all an idea, we're talking about the Water District and your two 7 million gallon holding tanks prior to the water being distributed out to the city. That right there, because of the fact it's essentially a gigantic 60-degree swimming pool and two of them that are segregated, what we're talking about doing is what's called the clean frame heat exchanger system, where we drop a, almost like a radiator in a car with some pipes down into the water that stays that consistent temperature, and because of the fact of the existing infrastructure that is providing the HVAC system, providing heating and cooling to the Water District that is in various states of disrepair, some of it is a lot of deferred maintenance, a lot of continual issues, and essentially we need an energy hauler. Using something like this to be able to provide air conditioning does two things. It saves an enormous amount of energy with an energy source that's already there and is based in your system, and it meets one of the regulatory items for the Inflation Reduction Act. So, we want to keep this as simple as possible, but the application for it is really interesting, especially on the finance and the overall process. So, this is where you all don't have to learn acronyms. This is ours. Live this on a daily basis and continually stay updated on every one of the updates that continually have, reductions, retractions, additions, everything else. To give you all a little bit of a background, the Inflation Reduction Act, however you want to define inflation, $300 million of that goes to, or $300 billion of that goes to fighting inflation. $369 billion goes to providing energy security, fighting climate change, providing renewables, which is essentially what we're talking about here today, electric cars and carbon sequestration, so taking carbon, sticking it down to the ground. And for the gentleman that talks about the labor side, this is a must-do for us to be able to make sure that there is, whether it's union labor or essentially program labor agreements or apprenticeship programs, because when we do these type of projects, the way the legislation was written, we have to abide by all the prevailing wage, provide certified payroll, everything else that goes along with making sure all these workers pay a fair wage and not gaining the system. Thermal energy storage is a big component of the Inflation Reduction Act. So, they do what are called ice plants, just like if you were using your refrigerator at night and making ice and then opening it up during the day to cool your house, same kind of concept. Chilled water storage is exactly the application we're talking about here for the Water District, and cogeneration, which we're not talking about, but essentially that is using heat coming off a big engine to repurpose some of those. This is where it gets interesting, is the federal tax credit for the Title 48 stipulation for the Inflation Reduction Act. This is where, if you know the legislation, you can make these kind of projects very, very financially beneficial to all your taxpayers, using less dollars to be able to get more. And as long as you follow the process and know the process, it can make these things very, very beneficial to your entire constituency. So, what it says is that for federal tax credits, and we are talking about tax credits, not deductions, so if you do a million-dollar project, at the end of the project, the city, and whether it's a public entity, 501(c)(3), whatever, even though you don't pay taxes, you do pay a marginal property tax, which the federal government considers you all taxpayers, you will get a tax credit. So, that million dollars, if you maximize this to 50%, you would get $500,000 back that then you can repurpose, reallocate, or do whatever you like with it, or just make the project that you do, that much more financially valuable. The way it works, they call them kickers or boosters. Essentially, you get a 30% base tax credit. So, if we do a million-dollar project, the base level you would get is $300,000. This is where it gets interesting, and this is the research. For everything that we're going to be adding in, and the solution we're doing is made both in Denver and also Louisiana, so there's a domestic content manufacturer's kit for an extra 10%. And then, last, is what's called the Energy Community Location, or you may have heard of as DDC, disadvantaged communities. I can provide this council a map that shows exactly in Moline. If you are either on coal or moving off of coal and certain socioeconomic thresholds, you're qualified as a DAC, which allows you to be able to take advantage of an extra 10% added on to it. So, the way we would structure it is, and again, this is where council's legal counsel would have to get involved and make sure everybody's taken care of and along with their engineering partners. 50% of this project can be paid for, and not just for the tanks and the thermal energy storage piece. Because of the fact that the way the Water District is set up, using gas exchanger, what we call DX, to be able to provide air conditioning, to do this, we would switch everything over to what we call chilled water systems. Use a chiller. You have some sort of heat rejection, which is going to be the water tanks instead of the cooling tower, those big fans that continually blow air and moisture up into the air, and all of the controls, all the pumping, all the piping, everything else, since you're switching the base of design for the entire building over, that entire project, instead of just the clean frame heat exchangers qualifies for that Title 48 tax incentive. So, you essentially get to upgrade, modernize, and make energy efficient, your entire Water District's HVAC system, add 50% of the expense to the federal government, not including any sort of utility incentives and some of the other rank pieces that we can throw on top of that as well. This is just really, really high-level. This is the base where, and there's a time criticality to this as well. This money is very, very significant, though everybody in the feds is very concerned about clawbacks and change of administration. So, they've set almost a sunset where at the end of 2024, change of election cycle and everything else, your property then has to become net zero to be able to get this unless you start, you encumber the money for the project and start construction, which can be one guy pushing broom to get everybody ready. By the end of 2024, you will qualify for this. After 2024, it gets a lot less financially viable just because of what else. So, and if you all need the IRS tax code, essentially this would just be like you're sending the IRS a bill. At the end of the time, we will provide the city a notarized engineered set of drawings for everything that we've done with all the cost allocations. Say it was a million dollars, you would submit this Title 48 form that we have. It's just the same thing you do with solar, submit it to the IRS. Within two weeks, the IRS kicks a check back for half of your project cost. So, essentially here. Where we are in this process, both myself, my counterpart that's up here, a guy by the name of Josh Rouse, Mr. Lodi, City Administrator Vitis, we've all been talking about this, and I've walked the water site now three different times. We've seen what you all have, we've seen the opportunity, we've seen the constructability of this process, and it is very, very straightforward. So, that takes care of, the way we do this is a three-step process. First, walking the site, which we've already done. The next is some of the documentation we're going to be providing to Mr. Lodi and Mr. Vitis for the council's essentially review and acceptance, hopefully. The next step would go into conceptual engineering, equipment selection, financial modeling, walking everything through, just like, I guess the easiest way to say this, put a business plan together for what the project looks like and all the milestones and everything else that need to be hit. And the really, really interesting part, every construction project tends to take a long time when it comes to public money because of your standard procurement and public procurement processes. Have to go out to an engineer, go back and forth, select who that is, let them get to engineer drawings, get to the end of that, and then submit it to everyone that has a contractor's license that is. And if you all need the IRS tax code, essentially this would just be like you're sending the IRS a bill at the end of the time, we will provide the city a notarized engineered set of drawings for everything that we've done with all the cost allocations, say it was a million dollars, you would submit this Title 48 form that we have, it's just the same thing you do with solar, submit it to the IRS, within two weeks, the IRS kicks a check back for half of your project cost. Where we are in this process, both myself, my counterpart that's up here, a guy by the name of Josh Rouse, Mr. Lodi, City Administrator, Vitas, we've all been talking about this, and I've walked the water site now three different times, we've seen what you all have, we've seen the opportunity, we've seen the constructability of this process, and it is very, very straightforward. So, that takes care of, the way we do this is a three-step process. First, walking the site, which we've already done, the next is some of the documentation we're going to be providing to Mr. Lodi and Mr. Vitas for the, for council's essentially review and acceptance hopefully. The next step would go into conceptual engineering, equipment selection, financial modeling, walking everything through, just like, I guess the easiest way to say this, put a business plan together for what the project looks like, and all the milestones and everything else that need to be hit, and the really, really interesting part, every, every construction project tends to take a long time when it comes to public money because of your standard procurement and public procurement processes. Have to go out to an engineer, go back and forth, select who that is, let them get to engineer drawings, get to the end of that, and then submit it to everyone that has a contractor's license that is nominally acceptable, and then let them bid back and forth, ask all their questions, and at the end of that, hopefully you're getting what you, what you think you're going to get, and then it's up to the contractors to negotiate back and forth, and hopefully, hopefully council's written that airtight contract because they always come back for value engineering, switching what people may or may not enjoy or like to maintain, just because of the fact it's going to be, your contract wasn't this way, so here's how we get to do it. Train has been awarded two years ago the Omni Partners Cooperative Purchase Agreement with an Illinois contract number, which is a national, a national contract that's adopted state by state. It allows this body to be able to contract with us directly to do this project with your input from start to finish. You all get to pick who your engineering partner is, I know Strand Engineering is a big player out here, and they do, they do some significant work with you all. Contractors, you all get to pick the contractor, we can make recommendations, every, every city, state, municipality that I deal with. When money gets spent in a place, I, I'm a big proponent of making sure the money stays where the money is being spent, so local contractors, maybe people that might have the massive bonding capacity of somebody that's been doing work all across the country, us as Train can stand behind them, allow them to be able to do a project that might be just a little bit outside their comfort zone, and help them become bigger and not only do that, but increase your tax base, increase job opportunities, and keep the money here. And through that entire process, Madam Mayor, this is, this is one of the interesting parts. If you all were to go out for a bond issue, there's a couple of other different ways to be able to approach how to get a project like this done. One of the biggest things, political risk, as you go through the process, you don't want to have us coming back with hat in hand saying, "We missed this," or "This wasn't included in the overall contract, we need an extra million and a half to $2 million to do what we originally said." Because of the fact that this will be a collaborative approach with progress meetings, with deliverables, with everything else that needs to happen, by the time we hit 60% design, us as Train will do the rest of the, rest of the project as guaranteed match price, there are no change orders. Everybody knows what you're getting, you know the pumps, you know who the piping manufacturer is, who care, all the way down to the controls and everything else, and this is as much or as, as much or as little engagement as you'd like to have, and everybody at the Water District and this council gets exactly what they want for their money spent. So, the rest was a little bit of, I don't want to say overreach, but talking about the rest of our process. The various things are, you all presented with a very, very distinct opportunity. The financial incentives are, they're fleeting, but they're here, they're going to be here for the next year and a half, to be able to take advantage of this, especially with the opportunity that you have here at the Water District, and then we can always have sidebar conversations for the rest of the city because they can be easily applied across the rest to be able to hit your goals. We look forward to being able to partner with you, and we appreciate the time and the listening here, so thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the council at this time? Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
I just, the opportunity to get the money is at the end of 2024, correct?
To get the money approved from the feds.
We have to start the project by then.
It has, money has to be encumbered and contracted, it has to start.
Okay, so what's the ballpark of how long this project would take to complete?
We got this done by the middle of next year. This is, this is a very, very straightforward thing. The only things that may pull this up, and it shouldn't be because of the sizing of what we're doing, would be a couple of the equipment pieces getting there on time. So, but either way, everything, once the project is commissioned, is when the check comes. So, if it, if it leads right to the end, if it's January of the following year, if there's a, there's a piece that's missing, all that money's still appropriated to you all. So.
Yes, Mr. Timmy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a few technical questions, just for fun. If we're using the drinking water as the thermal energy storage, obviously we're probably going to have two heat sinks for radiators, one for cool, one for heat. What fluid is going through there to capture? Is that also, so it's just, is it the same water? I'm just concerned about contamination.
No, no, so these are, this is a closed-loop system. Nothing is going to be, yeah, it's a fair question. There is no infiltration, it's all closed loop, and we're either going to be using 316 stainless or a titanium alloy that will not corrode and break down.
And no, no real issues with contamination because it's closed loop as well?
Correct, yep.
Okay. And will these be something, Tony, can our people work on this for maintenance next? How much are we talking about saving in HVAC?
That's something that Train will be working on, and they'll do the financial analysis first, but going back to.
Can you come to the microphone, Mr. Lodi?
Going back to Alderman O'Brien's question, there will be a bit of a delay because the EPA will have to weigh in, we'll have, this will have to be permitted through EPA, that's something that is, is not typical with a project that Train has done in the past.
Mr. Macias?
Thank you. So, for our project, it would just be dropping these radiator-like things, you don't have to build something outside, no other structure has to be built?
No other structure, we do have to replace your existing HVAC equipment with more efficient water-based systems, because it can't operate with the current cooling and heating mechanisms that are there now, and that's a good thing.
And what do they look like? Are they, because of pictures I'm seeing here.
That is a, that is a large application of a plate frame heat exchanger, it was the easiest, highest resolution system I can get, they're actually going to be broken up in smaller, smaller sections.
Okay, so a lot smaller.
Oh, yeah.
24,000. Thank you.
Okay, no further questions? Thank you very much, we'll look forward to more information.
Thank you all.
All right. 8.2, July 2023 Status and Information Report, Mr. Vitas?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you know, monthly we release a report on the status of information of all projects across all departments. Having not received any questions, I'm assuming there are none, but if there are questions, we're more than happy to provide answers and answer any.
Yeah, we've got a couple hands.
Couple hands, so.
Do you mind if I go first, Mr. Macias?
We'll answer your questions this evening.
All right, I'm under Engineering Services, Morgan Park Bike Path. Maybe this is one of your questions too, and your award.
I like it.
Mr. Dryer, can you just refresh my memory? Is this project just the engineering, or are we going to get this constructed? Because I know we have families really looking forward to having that path get to Hamilton.
It ultimately will result in construction, but we're still in the engineering stages now.
So, this item is just for the engineering, not the construction, when I see late 2023? The completion is just the engineering?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then, I mean, I know things go slowly, but if we can move that along, I know people will appreciate it. Secondly, the, under legal ordinance amendments and additions and progress, I don't see what I've asked for, which is the tobacco license cap issue. I know I've spoken with Ms. Kostopoulos about that, I've mentioned it on the floor, so I just want to not let it slip, that it's really important as we look at, you know, the fact that we do have some control with the caps we have in place for cannabis and liquor, that we also have it for tobacco, in my opinion, the council can decide, but I'd like that to get completed.
Understood.
Thanks. Mr. Macias?
Thank you. My question is about Belgrade Building, the order to demolish, so that building, there's no saving it?
No, the decision has been made for the building to be demolished, and it is scheduled for demolition, as I understand, and what the property will be reused for afterwards, I don't know.
Okay. And the follow-up question, for a building like that.
And the street will be real.
Do, do we expect the, the historical commission or wanting to document the building?
It would be, it would be nearly impossible because of safety issues inside the structure. The building definitely is unsafe, uninhabitable, and, you know, I'm not sure what they would document.
Yeah, I was just curious, because it's an old building and it's got character.
I think that they have been in touch with the city already, so.
Oh, okay.
They already know whatever they're going to know, I guess. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Mr. Timmy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to touch, based on the abandoned property program, I've heard some chatter in the background that we're looking at, we, the city, are looking at opening up bids for some of these abandoned residential properties, do you have any information? I have residents who are.
They want to purchase abandoned properties?
Some want to purchase, some want the church gone that's been abandoned.
So, we're referring to a very specific site?
A number of them, but, you know, I just, in general, is there any movement on?
There, there has been, Alderman, I mean, there's been discussions very specifically about an RFP that would be going out very, very shortly, that would, would be soliciting proposals, basically best proposals from potential developers or redevelopers, depending upon the case. There is potential at that location for no less than three new lots, to mirror those that are basically on the south side of the property, south property line, which would require the removal of the church, the church building, and then the old parsonage building. So, that's certainly an option that's being looked at, there's also the option of, you know, renovating the church, and we're waiting to see, when we put the RFP out, what kind of a response we're going to get, and then we would bring back all the options that present at the council.
Anything further? Okay, hearing nothing else, we'll close out the call and call a regular council meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the five United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no invocation this evening, so we move to our roll call, please.
Alder Person Murphy?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Razak?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Finch?
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Castro?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, request approval of executive session minutes of June 13, 2023, committee of the whole council on executive session minutes of June 20, 2023, and appointments made during committee of the whole this evening, July 11, 2023. Second reading ordinances. Item 14.1 in ordinance amending chapter four alcoholic liquor of the Illinois Code of Ordinances, increasing the number of Class B licenses in the city at the request of Alexis Nelson, potential purchaser of the former Casey's Tavern at 1512 15th Street, Moline. Resolutions. Item 15.1, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase replacement fuel island terminals from Seneca Companies for the amount of $33,218.60, utilizing the Sourcewell joint purchase contract number 092920GVR. Item 15.2, a resolution authorizing fleet and facilities manager to purchase an electronic tank monitor and necessary components from Seneca Companies for the amount of $40,858.67, utilizing the Sourcewell joint purchase contract number 092920GVR. Item 15.3, a resolution authorizing the municipal services general manager to purchase a Henderson Brine Advantage brine maker and two 6,000-gallon polystorage tanks from Casper's Truck Equipment for the amount of $87,000, utilizing the Sourcewell joint purchase contract number 30797GVR. Item 15.4, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to an agreement between by state regional commission and the city of Moline for contractual services relating to the planning study of the Andalusia Road Indian Bluff Road corridor from Rock Island to Moline regarding a multi-jurisdictional planning study with the city of Moline committing $4,952 to the local match. Item 15.7, a resolution authorizing the director of engineering to sole-source purchase 11 I-Terris Next Video Vehicle Detection Systems from mobo trucks for the amount of $241,398.72. Item 15.8, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to a contract with Hair Construction Incorporated for project number 1422, 2023 Sewer Lining Program for the amount of $460,604.90. Item 15.9, a resolution authorizing the director of engineering to sole-source purchase 30 traffic signal controllers and 26 traffic signal malfunction management units from mobo trucks for the amount of $149,024. Item 15.11, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to a license and concession agreement between the city of Moline and Little Stevie's to sell food and beverages from a mobile food unit at the northeast parking lot of Stevens Park from July 17, 2023 through July 16, 2025, as weather permits, at the city's sole discretion, and authorizing city staff to do any and all things necessary to fulfill the terms of the license and concession agreement. Item 15.3, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to a joint funding agreement for state-led construction work, a letter of understanding, and a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code authorizing motor fuel tax funds to be used for the city's local match for project 19-0027100BT Mississippi River to Rock River Shared Use Path for the amount of $1,625. Item 15.14, a resolution approving a final payment number six with Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities Incorporated.
One second.
I'm sorry, Jean.
For point of clarification, which wrong number?
You misstated the amount on item 15.3, stated $1,625 instead of $1,625,000.
Thank you.
And Your Honor, that is 15.13.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Takes a team.
Thank you, so it's $1,625,000.
You just forgot a thousand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 15.14, a resolution approving a final payment number six with Centennial Contractors of Quad Cities Incorporated for project number 1377, 36th Avenue Court Reconstruction, in the amount of $36,564.58, with the final change order amount of $35,344.58. Project still came in under budget at $870,585.26. Item 15.15, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to a contract with Valley Construction Company for project number 1434, CDBG-funded street repairs for the amount of $273,645. Item 15.16, a resolution approving the special event application for Gabe's Gift Memorial 5K and One Mile Fun Run event scheduled for Saturday, September 9, 2023, that is sponsored by 2D's Tribe, and closing certain streets, more particularly described herein, to vehicular traffic. Item 15.17, a resolution approving a purchasing card policy for the city of Moline.
Move to approve consent agenda. Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Timian. Roll call, please.
Alder Person Finch? Yes. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Alder Person O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Not consent agenda resolutions. Item 15.5, a resolution approving a supplemental resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code for Motor Fuel Tax, section number 23-000000GM, 2023 Asphalt Program for the amount of $354,796.10.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, seconded by Schmidt, discussion. Believe you had a question, Mr. Schmidt?
I am just, I'm act, I would like to have a greater explanation of not just the legal understanding of what has gotten us to this point and what is taking us down this path, but also just from our staff perspective, this is very unusual, and I just would like to explain a little.
Set.
No.
Who wants to start?
I mean, there's clearly different people can, I mean, I would start with what, what created the issue in the first place, and then explaining the state law specifically, which allows for what's being contemplated tonight.
So, we were approached by finance that there was additional motor fuel tax monies available, and that we had some urgency to, to expend it this year. Two of these items are, are part of the change orders necessary to do that, and they're required by the state, those are those motor fuel tax changes of 15.5 and 15.6. Then you've got the change orders themselves, which were projects that we wanted to add, 39th Street in particular, which is underway, and because of the large amount of the change order, 100% increase, unbeknownst to me, there's a state law that requires council must have a motion to not, not do formal bidding to do that again. So, I'm not an attorney, clearly. So, that's part of that issue. We had talked to IDOT in advance of that, and they said, "Yeah, this is something you can do, we don't see any problem at all." And then, you know, in checking due diligence with purchasing procedures with the city and checking in with Margaret, all of a sudden, we find that there's a state law that. all of a sudden we find that there's a state law that, that requires this two-thirds majority vote. So that's why we're here with those.
Second question. Forgot to remind everyone, because especially on the, yeah.
The, so in, in that, the issue of, make your pardon. Why, what is the benefit of doing it this way as opposed to going through an additional bidding process as we normally would? Like, what, why are we expediting?
Timing of the expediency. And by doing this, we're not paying for mobilization twice. So we're using the same contractor. They're working in the city. We're just feeding them additional projects. So in the great scheme of things, it's a better benefit for the taxpayers.
Thank you. Any further questions on fifteen point five? Any further explanation to add?
The, just for clarification, since I wasn't part of the conversation with Margaret, we're waiving competitive bidding here?
Yes, we're going through the process with the two-thirds majority.
Okay, that's fine. Yes. So when you want to waive competitive bidding, it's a two-thirds supermajority vote of the corporate authorities, the mayor does vote. There's also a provision in Illinois law concerning change orders and the threshold amount of change orders that could trigger the two-thirds supermajority vote as well, which may be part of the issue here as well.
Yes, the fifty percent.
Yep.
Triggered.
Mr. Timian.
Just for clarification, we're waiving bidding on fifteen, ten, and twelve, not five and seven?
Seven is not what we're discussing.
We're talking about fifteen, five.
Those, those are just proving that the legal paperwork requirements that IDOT's requiring, that should not require a supermajority vote, but just those two change orders.
Right.
Of fifteen, ten, and fifteen, twelve.
But for clarity, are we waiving competitive building, bidding on those two items?
Yes.
Okay.
Just refer to.
Ten and twelve, sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, that's in the memo from Mark Heinley, actually.
Okay.
Mr. Silverman, and I'm just triple checking because as I read it, I would have read that the, a supermajority would require the mayor to vote, which you said, but in the memo, I think it says the mayor doesn't have to vote. You need six votes without the mayor, is what the memo said. So I'm.
Yes.
Is that the correct interpretation?
It's, it's the, it's the city council vote.
Yes, six from the city council.
Ordinarily, the two-thirds does trigger the mayor voting.
Good, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. All right. So with no further discussion on five point five, roll call, please.
Alderperson Finch.
Aye, here.
Aye. Is that what you're saying? I'm not telling that about.
Alderperson O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Item fifteen point six. A resolution approving a supplemental resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code of Motor Fuel Tax, section number twenty-three zero 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 one G M, twenty twenty-three asphalt maintenance program for the amount of two hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty cents.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Schmidt, second by Timian. Discussion? Any further questions? Related, same system, right? Okay. Hearing no questions, roll call, please.
Alderperson Finch.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Item fifteen point ten, a resolution approving a change order with Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities Incorporated for Motor Fuel Tax, section number twenty-three dash zero 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 G M, twenty twenty-three asphalt program for the amount of three hundred and fifty-four thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and ten cents.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to waive competitive bidding and ratify.
Wait, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Timian, second by Alderperson O'Brien. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Finch.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Item number fifteen point twelve, a resolution approving a change order with Langman Construction Incorporated for Motor Fuel Tax, section number twenty-three dash zero 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 one G M, twenty twenty-three asphalt maintenance program for the amount of three hundred and twenty-four thousand fourteen dollars.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to waive competitive bidding and approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Timian, second by Macias this time. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Finch.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Item seventeen point one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to an amendment to Task Order twenty-two dash zero three with Strand Associates Incorporated for engineering services related to cybersecurity improvements at the water treatment plant, SCADA and cybersecurity technical support of the North Slope wastewater treatment plant, and proposed utility network in an amount not to exceed forty-four thousand dollars and authorizing the Director of Utilities to execute any and all necessary documents related to this work.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Macias. Discussion? Anything further? No. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Finch.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Item seventeen point two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to professional services agreement with I-ME Corporation for engineering services related to the second phase of design of the East Gate Tiff Stormwater Conveyance and Flood Mitigation Improvements in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and authorizing the Director of Utilities to execute any necessary documents related to this work.
Move to approve. Second.
All right, motion by O'Brien, second by Razak. Any discussion? Discussion? Do you need to?
No, I don't have to, but I, but I think I just wanted to update council.
Yeah.
Because I think this is a significant investment in stormwater in the city. Historically, we haven't had a lot of heavy investments in our stormwater management system. And the tip obviously was approved by council. We've had ongoing bi-weekly meetings with Mr. Nelson, the president and CEO of our instrument, who was also named the number one, or the best, I guess it was in Quad City Business Journal named the best manufacturing business this year. But Deere is the first runner up and Arconic is the second runner up. So real happy to report on that. You know, this project, of course, is the second phase of the stormwater management improvement process that was started many, many years ago. We're still looking for construction funding from, from Congress. And I know the mayor is tracking that down all the time with, with Senator Duckworth's office, but we are moving forward with the project and they are moving forward with property acquisitions as well. So it's all positive news and it's all good news for the East Gate.
Thank you. Hearing no further questions or comments, roll call, please.
Alderperson Finch.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Item seventeen point three, a resolution authorizing approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-six capital improvement plan as shown on exhibit A attached here too and incorporated herein by reference.
Move to approve?
Well, sorry. Motion by Alderperson Schmidt, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Thank you for incorporating everything we talked about. Back in June.
Back in June.
Addressing those issues.
And I want to thank the council for your good time and consideration of the CIP. Obviously, it's a, it's a major fund commitment on the part of the city. And if you look at just the sheer volume of dollars that are being invested in the city, in a neighborhood of nearly thirty million dollars in one year, fifteen, the next, another thirty million. The city is heavily invested in its infrastructure and providing for great services for its businesses and for its residents and visitors alike.
Thank you. Hearing nothing further, roll call, please.
Alderperson Finch.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Item seventeen point four, a resolution authorizing Community Economic Development Department on behalf of the City of Moline to apply to the Illinois Housing Development Authority, I D A, for an Illinois Homeowner Assistance Fund Home Repair Program grant in the amount of one million five hundred thousand dollars and authorizing city staff to do any and all things necessary to apply for the I D A for an Illinois Homeowner Assistance Fund Home Repair Program grant.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Alderperson Macias, second by Alderperson Murphy. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Finch.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Item seventeen point five, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to a Central Square Solutions Agreement, the Central Square Technologies LLC, for access to certain software applications and maintenance support, migration, installation, and other professional services for the amount of one hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and a yearly subscription fee of fifty-three thousand six dollars and authorizing the information technology manager to execute any and all necessary documents related to this work.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Macias, second by Razak. Any discussion? Another thank you for getting something toward the one-stop shop off the ground.
Yeah, I want to, I want to extend thanks to David Rowat and, and other team members who spent significant amount of time researching and analyzing different software technology platforms that will serve as the backbone for the future permitting and licensing software systems here in Moline. If done right, and it will be done right, this represents basically a fifty percent discount off the normal price. It was normally two hundred thousand. So we're able to negotiate a decent deal. This is the recommendation from, from the committee. It's about a twelve, ten to twelve month rollout because of the data migration and the processes that are going to take place so that none of the old data for all the permitting and licensing is, is in a loss in a separate system, but it all will migrate, you know, and both systems will run in parallel for a short period of time as we near, near the launch dates, about a year from now. And this is the backbone for, for the one-stop shop. Short of having a facility where people can all go to one place, people will be able to do what you do in other cities and apply for permits online from the comfort of their, their homes. So it's really a, a significant move forward for the city.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, roll call, please.
Alderperson Finch.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian. Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Item seventeen point seven, a resolution approving a modified license agreement with Mercado on Fifth to better define the street closure area based on attendance information and community feedback from Mercado on Fifth weekly through October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and closing certain streets more particularly described herein to vehicular traffic.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Macias, second by Timian. Mr. Vita?
Sure. All right, just making notes here as I go. All right. So with us today, I can see Maria Antevaros is in the audience, so you're free to, she's free to speak on the subject if she would like, if I'm correct. We get to that point if necessary. As you know, we, we have gone through a, a month of Mercado on Fifth and to say the least, it's been extremely successful. In fact, it's more successful than I think that they had dreamed of or planned on. I think it's, it's larger than even we had expected it to be. And, and obviously it was on the front page of the Quad City Business Journal, I believe, today. So it tells you that people are paying attention to the event. It is a significant event for, for Moline, and we would like to keep it that way. All rumors dispelled, we will keep it that way. Originally, we, we approved a license agreement that went through the Special Events Committee, and that we'll call that license agreement one. And specifically, it was for one day, closing a portion, not entirely all of Twelfth Street, but a portion similar to what had been done in a prior year. And, and when that license agreement was approved, it was for May twenty-sixth, which was the kickoff date. And correct me if I'm wrong, but there was over nine thousand people in attendance, you know, basically seventy-five percent of the whole arena. That's how many people actually showed up. So that was kind of like the announcement that we're going to have a good year, good success. So they came back later because of that and looked at additional dates in June. Basically, it was like every Friday in June up until, I believe, the twenty, the thirtieth. It's the thirtieth, I believe. So the second agreement allowed for that, but in the course of, of entering into that agreement, staff got concerned because of the sheer volume of people that were attending. And Public Safety and Public Works, my office and others decided that maybe we need to really close the street during the course of the month to see what kind of volumes were being produced in terms of attendance and dealing with other issues, you know, teenagers and fees and no fees to get in, you know, kind of experimenting as we go to make sure that, that we can have a successful event, but we can have a safe event. So we took it upon ourselves then, not at Mercado's request, you know, their request was, was a more narrow, limited closure, but we closed it on both ends because we did not want traffic that was going westbound on, on Illinois ninety-two on Fourth Avenue to turn left into the crowds. And we sure did not want to see anybody heading west on Fifth to actually turn, Fifth Avenue to turn left on the Twelfth Street. So that's how the closures took place. And then there was the traditional closure at Fifth Avenue Place, which as you know, is the curb that leads to the Boys and Girls Club in Mercado. And kind of weird, you have Fifth Street, Fifth Avenue Place, and Fifth Avenue again. But, so we, we went ahead and we had the second agreement and Maria was going to monitor what was going on, very specifically in terms of attendance, because that was my request. Let's find out exactly what's happening. So we went down that road. And, and in the midst of all that, then of course, we got, we started to get some complaints from Shooting Supply, which is a store that's been.
Shooting Sports?
Shooting Sports, Shooting Supply, Shooting Sports, thank you. Basically complaining that they support it, but they were losing business every Friday because we were closing the road at one o'clock and, and they were losing an amount that they described, right? So we went ahead and we said, okay, we're going to have to revisit this because this is just not going to work either. We have to make sure this does work. So we came up with a third license agreement to go forward between now and what is the day of the dead on October twenty-seventh, eighth, thank you, October twenty-eighth, which is kind of like the end of the season. That's how they close out the season for Mercado. So we went ahead and we, we came up with what we think is a, a solution, which basically returns the limits of the closure to just that which was requested and expanding it a little, but allowing vehicular movements off of Fifth down Twelfth to the, to, to the Shooting Sports Store. And then people being able to use the alley to exit out then to what is Thirteenth Street. And at the same token, on Fourth, allowing people to make that left-hand turn movement if they should so choose, but then seeing the road closure, being able to turn into the alley, basically going back to one of the city parking lots on Thirteenth Street. So we think we've come up with a solution to move the traffic around without having to prohibit the businesses from being not served properly. And I know, I think Mercado was going to reach out definitely to the owner of the one store that did complain. So we did that. In the meantime, we also took a look at, at, or continue to look at different alternatives for non-truck type barricades rather than placing our trucks out there, putting them actually in harm's way. Just keep in mind, we can't get trucks. Ordering trucks is really a difficult thing. And we can't afford to have one of the major plows actually plowed into, to be a pun, because we would be in trouble replacing that with the upcoming snow season. So our recommendation So, our recommendation is to approve the agreement, the, the third license agreement. Only the council has the authority to close roads, only the council. Historically, they've been closed without council approval. So, as we go forward, and hence the reason why Dear Wyman came, came this evening, um, and why the Special Events Committee is really not taking a position on road closures anymore, that rest, that authority rests with the city council, as it should, and in the meantime, we will continue to work with Mercado to come up with even more solutions, uh, keeping them coherent and heavy, but by the same token, creating a safe environment, you know, for the attendees, because it is very, very much a heavily family-orientated event. So, that being said, that's where we're at.
Thank you. Anything from the council? Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
What are the peak hours of, of Mercado, I mean, what?
Can you tell us, Maria, your peak hours?
Sure. Um, hours are from five to ten P.M.
And it's busiest?
Busiest around seven-thirty.
Do we have any idea what the traffic count is on Fifth Avenue? Because that's the main, I guess the street I worry about the most, it's the most traffic.
Chief, I don't know if we have, have done a traffic count there, correct?
And the later the evening goes on, the more problems you may have.
Fifth Avenue?
Yeah. Fifth and, what is that, Fourth? The Fourth.
Fourth Avenue, I don't know, well, Fourth Avenue isn't, isn't impacted, it's just Fifth at Twelfth Street.
Right.
Fifth is downtown, it's not like ninety-two.
I understand, but, uh, the amount of traffic with the, the amount of people in that area, you know.
Oh, you mean like leaving and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm not aware of, um, traffic problems for ingress or egress to the event, that doesn't seem to be our issues.
Okay.
Uh, with, with, uh.
Okay.
With traffic flow.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing further, roll call please.
Alderperson Finch.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. And that motion passes.
Do you mind if I say, say a few words?
Go ahead.
I just, uh, thank you for being here, for letting me be here tonight, I wanted to thank the city, because together with Brad's team, with Graham's team, with, with all of your decision-making, we've been able to do some pretty remarkable things this summer. Um, Mercado has welcomed thirty thousand people, plus people, uh, to Moline, um, we've had, recorded over three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in taxable revenue, um, and that does not include all the revenue, um, that our organization is spending to, to put it on, our vendors are spending to, to put it on, it doesn't include the people who don't wanna wait in line, um, and walk down Fifth Avenue to have dinner, or go up the Hill to El Mariachi, so, um, we're, we're making a really big impact and, um, really appreciate your willingness to keep this going, um, we've got a lot of really positive feedback about the extension, um, it's, it just become really comfortable, um, with, with these bigger crowds, so thank you again.
Thank you.
And hope to see you, we've got some great events coming up, so.
All right, seventeen point six. Adam Clark?
Seventeen point six is a resolution approving the special event application for the Butterworth Center and Dear Wyman House porch party event, scheduled for Sunday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, and closing certain streets more particularly described herein to vehicular traffic.
Motion to approve.
I can't tell who's doing what, one at a time, please. Mr. Schmidt.
Motion, motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Timian, seconded by Mr. Macias. Discussion, please.
Well, I just wanna add, um, yeah, looking at the map, there's a very small, narrow, uh, stretch, and there's no businesses or actual houses that are like in that area, so I, I just feel, you know, pretty comfortable with this one.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
I just, with the Special Event Committee recommending denial, I mean, I, I'm assuming, unless you're best to ask this too, that that is based largely on our ongoing conversations and restricting and shutting down these types of events, as opposed to actually having a problem with this particular event.
Correct.
That's how I understand it, and, and to be clear, this evening is about road closure, but Mr. Mr. Vitas and I have discussed, uh, an overall overhaul to some of the special events things, it, it's a wonderful problem to have, that many people want to have their event in Moline, we need to prep for when we have that downtown riverfront, you know, we need to be thinking about what are the best policies, et cetera, um, so we'll be coming back, I, and of course, I'm, you're gonna be sick of hearing me say equity, right? Like, different events do require different things, but we, we, in a sense, need to be viewing them with an equity lens in terms of what they're allowed to do, um, so that's, will be addressed i- in upcoming meetings. Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Follow and answer that, I think that, um, the move toward finding that more better consistency, needing to increase and rep, rep, and understanding how we need to focus on that security, but this really strikes me as something akin to a block party, or that type of closure, um, so I think it, it's appropriate to move forward.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else, roll call please.
Alderperson Finch.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Item eighteen point one, in Ordnance Amending Chapter Two Administration, Article Four, Boards and Commissions, Division One in General, Section Two dash forty-one hundred, List of Boards and Commissions, Subsection E, Excessive Absenteeism.
Motion to advance, second.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Timian. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderperson Finch.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes to advance. Item number eighteen point two, in Ordnance Amending Chapter Two Administration of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Article Four, Boards and Commissions, Division Two, Moline Commission on Youth, Section Two dash forty-two oh one, Ex officio members.
Motion to advance, second.
Motion by Timian, seconded by Macias, ro- discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderperson Finch.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion to advance is approved. Item eighteen point three, in Ordnance Amending Chapter Four, Alcoholic Liquor, Article Three, Retail Licenses, Division One in General, Section Four dash thirty-one oh three, Licenses to be used only for premises for which issued, non-transferable, and Division Two, Licensing Procedure, Section Four dash thirty-two oh eight, License Fees.
Motion to advance, second.
Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Timian, discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderperson Finch.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion to advance is approved. Item eighteen point four, in Ordnance Amending Chapter Four, Alcoholic Liquor, Article Three, Retail Licenses, Division Three, Privileges Confirmed by Various Classes of Licenses, Section Four dash thirty-three fifteen, Option Two Extended, Hours Three A.M.
Move to approve, to advance.
Thank you, Mr. Macias, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Timian. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, uh, very supportive of everything we're doing here, but there was one item that I think has not been addressed, and that is in the code language and talking about who has access to the video recordings, it has authorized government entities, and I'm not willing to put this into the hands of, um, border control, I'm not interested in putting it in the hands of, uh, neighboring jurisdictions who are seeking information by people who sought gender-affirming care or reproductive health care, and trying to enforce laws in their state that would be illegal and outside the purview of what we'd wanna participate in. As such, I move to strike section of Section Four, three-three-one-five, D-three-H-three, and replace it with, upon request shall be made available by the licensee for inspection by the police department or the local liquor control commissioner.
Second.
Okay. Uh, amendment motion by Schmidt, seconded by Timian, discussion on this? Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
And just to clarify for where that is, that is applying to the language about who has access to the video camera automatically, that does not prevent anyone with a warrant seeking out information from accessing that information, that does not prevent any law enforcement agency from getting a hold of it through the right process, while still giving our police department, our liquor commissioner, added control and the ability to access it immediately.
Thank you. Mr. Chief call.
Uh, su- support your intent, uh, might ask legal for maybe some clarification, so we do have some partnerships, like for example, we have detectives that are federally deputized at the FBI to take certain cases, uh, federal, um, so I'm a little concerned that that might preclude them from using that video in a, for example, a federal firearms investigation, if a convicted felon was to possess a firearm in a tavern, for example. So, I support your intent on Border Patrol or people, targeting people for those reasons, uh, we're, we're not gonna do that, so I, I, I support that, I'm just concerned that the latent effect of that language would then preclude us in a normal criminal investigation.
Mr. Schmidt.
I expressed with, in no uncertain terms, that this would be coming forward as the amendment at what it was discussed on the COW, and I asked if legal had a different justification or police of who needed to be included, to, uh, properly enumerate the authorities that need to be included, but providing a blanket, uh, ban is something I'm not going to sign off on at all. Um, I'm open to another solution, would happily propose additional language, but it has to, uh, protect the citizens of Moline.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Well, if you recall, I was against putting up cameras everywhere anyway, but I don't think you're gonna stop the FBI if they wanna come in and look at your cameras, am I right?
Mr. Silverman?
Yeah, I just, I mean, as I listen to Alderman Schmidt's concern, um, it, I understood that in the course of, of an investigation, where there could be subpoenas for records and things like that, your amendment wouldn't affect that. It's only, um, entities that might be trying to follow the whereabouts of people who might be doing things that might be impre- illegal in their states and coming to Illinois and doing stuff like that, whatever it is, is that, is that a fair characterization?
Or enforcing federal laws that could be decriminalized in the state of Illinois.
Right. Um, I think we can, we can work with this language and make it clearer as to what, who has proper access to these records, um, to capture the concern being raised by Alderman Schmidt.
So, there is an amendment on the floor that will need to be voted on, um, or retracted, or, there are options, but there is also not a, not, it's not a problem to vote on the amendment as is, and we, at the second reading, continue to amend, given that we'll get a memo from you guys this week?
Yes.
Okay. So, we will proceed. Any other comments or questions on this amendment?
So, clarification, the cameras will be used for certain, I guess, people, and not other people.
No, no, I believe the cameras are not surveillance cameras, they're for recordings of after, to check after the fact, correct?
Actually, yeah, right, so this is who, who has acc- automatic access under the city's code to the video surveillance. Properly, that should be local law enforcement entities, um, and not, the way it's written possibly opens it up for just about anyone, and we wanna, we wanna hem that in.
That's what this amendment wants to do.
Because I guess if it's a serial killer, I think we would all agree we want that camera footage released, but I, I, I'm trying to figure out who we're gonna pick and choose here on who we release the information to.
You should speak, but I'm gonna plainly say how this works and what I have to enforce, because this is liquor code, right? And you saw in the Status and Information Report that lots Z and K, Z and Y, what the heck it's?
Collector's Center.
Yeah, that those lots have, are, are being closed at ten-thirty. Do you know why we went to that? It says in your Status and Information Report, because there's criminal activity in gathering places, and in order for the cops to be able to take care of that criminal activity as soon as possible, so we don't jeopardize our to- town residents or businesses, that's what, why that piece is in there. Chief?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so this is a little bit of an extension from the, uh, mayor's hosting the three A.M. liquor licenses, also the things that they suggested that they would be willing to participate in, some of the issues that we have, uh, with, with liquor establishments is inevitably that type of, uh, uh, business, uh, alcohol and three A.M., uh, produces naturally fights, uh, criminal activity that need to be investigated. We are, have become a society that demands video for criminal prosecution. Uh, I'm wearing a body camera now, uh, you'll see that that is insatiable by the culture that we live in today to prove or disprove that something happened, and so we're being required to produce this for criminal cases, and in some instances, civil remedies, like the mayor's, uh, ability as the liquor control commissioner. So, uh, we have incidents that happen at two A.M., and, and our officers are there, and no one knows how to use the video. Uh, no one can get a hold of anybody that knows how to use the video, the video isn't working, uh, that camera isn't working, uh, they don't have it at all, and so this is an attempt to hold the business owners accountable, that if you're gonna have that license, uh, you have video surveillance to protect your, uh, patrons, patrons, uh, and it also provides us a mechanism to hold accountable, like, someone that is involved in criminal activity or violation of the liquor code. So, I'm all for strengthening it for that intent, m- my only concern is that we don't limit it to, if, if we have to take a case federal, primarily for federal, uh, firearms violations is our number one goal, and I didn't really think of it at the time that was brought up, but we could certainly, uh, massage it to meet everyone's concerns. Um, I think everyone's concerns are valid, and that, that we in general could support those, uh, because that's not the intent, right? It is not the Big Brother, not the targeting of, um, of certain individuals, trying to find that balance.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
And where, what I'm pushing forward is only an amendment to who is, who we would then be requiring those businesses to automatically release the video to, and they would still have the option to comply with any body of li- law enforcement that they chose to, and they still, a- as it said to in other legal proceedings, that would be able to get access to that video, would be able to do so. I, if we have a list of additional enumerated authorities to add, I think that seems the most simplest way to my mind, though, however legal police thinks is the best way to go, go after that, even if it's, however needs to be enumerated, but, yes, the blanket authority is my concern.
I, I don't know, and we can work on this offline, but, you know, something pursuant to the Moline Police Department and their lawful authority, uh, or pursuant to the liquor commissioner, I think that that would narrow it down.
Yeah, but this language, if you could reread it, sir, um, oh, does help narrow it down, I suggest we vote on this, and then we continue through second reading, which is your purview, to continue to refine it. Mr. Schmidt, please reread the amendment.
I move to strike, Section Four, three-three-one-five, D-three-H-three, and replace with, upon request shall be made available by the licensee for inspection by the police department or the local liquor control commissioner, and it previously had stated, for inspection by the police department, local liquor co- control commissioner, or other authorized government entity.
Got it, thank you. So, hearing nothing, further roll call, please, on the amendment.
I'm sorry, Your Honor, who was the second on that?
That was Timian.
Okay, thank you. Alderperson Finch.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Nate.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
I'm sorry, aye, thank you. Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Seven ayes and one nay, that, motion to amend passes.
Now we're back to the reg- original motion. If there's no further discussion, roll call please.
So this is the motion as amended.
Oh, yes, thank you, motion as amended.
Alder Person Finch.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay, and that motion passes. Item eighteen point five, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-seven, purchasing of the Moline Code of Ordinances to provide for updated procedures, standards, and streamlined procurement processes.
Sir, motion?
Move to advance.
Second. Motion by, uh, Macias, seconded by Castro, any discussion? Thank you very much, roll call please.
Alder Person Finch.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Item eighteen point six, an ordinance amending chapter four alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances, increasing the number of Class E licenses in the city at the request of HS Stores LLC, doing business as essentials.
Motion to advance to second reading.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Maci- Macias. Uh, discussion. I can s- say I'll add to the explanation, uh, that the, um, back in February, I had recommended to deny, um, and those reasons are iterated in the explanation, but, uh, and then you all voted to keep the cap where it was at, um, essentially denying the license. The business owner and, um, their team came back to Mr. Veetloke and myself to describe more thoroughly what they were intending and to request, um, to be able to apply again. We, we allowed that application again, they did provide more business information, some of which was included in your attachments. One that was not, that I was, um, insisting upon was understanding how many new jobs that they, that they talked to us about, and they said eight new jobs, and then a filled business on Avenue of the Cities, so that's additional information for you, and that is why it is in front of you this evening. Yes, Mr. O'Brien.
I would just say that, uh, I've been voting no on a lot of these mainly cause they're all in the sixth ward, uh, but I gotta say, I mean, they've sunk a lot of money into this building, the purchase of the building, the new business, we need, we need economic development on Avenue of the Cities, we got a lot of empty places, and I, I, I talked to the gentleman, I think he has representation maybe here tonight, I talked to the gentleman on the phone tonight, and I told him, well, I'm not big on, you know, expanding liquor, it's a pretty easy thing to do, and he gave me a pretty good sales pitch, I'll tell you that. I would vote to advance this further, I'm not gonna, still haven't decided how I'm gonna vote on it next week, but we'll advance it, I guess.
Yes, Mr. Castro.
I just have a question, I was actually, I was trying to look them up, um, online, do a little, but I could not find any, is it like listed under something else, like if I wanted to do a web search on?
Well, I heard them, uh, I heard an advertisement for them on the radio today, I think on one oh four point five, um, their Davenport store, and I also saw.
Okay, there is one in Davenport?
I saw one in, um, Rock Island, just happened to be near my place of work, um, I'm assuming it's the same company, they look the same, um, so, um, yeah, they're online somewhere.
That was my question was, is if it was the same one that was in, in Rock Island, or, okay.
Yeah. Anything further? Yes, Mr. Macias.
Thank you, uh, just wanna say this is a pretty well put together business plan. They did a nice job with the pictures and capturing the essence of what to expect because, um, when we first talked about it before, it's, this is totally not what I had in my mind, and, and I've seen these in, at bigger cities before, um, so, yeah, I think it would be a nice fit there, um, so, yeah, I, I wanna thank them for doing their due diligence and coming to us again with a lot more explanation, so.
Thank you. That's why we have an open door. Mr. Razak.
Thank you, Your Honor. I looked at their business plan, it, it sounds to me good, but it, it's all planned, that, that means I would say that this is their claim. What a person claimed to be doing and what actually doing are two different positions, so once they are, they have done their plan, i- would there be any way to inspect it that, okay, what they claim to be doing, they have done that.
Yes, that's part of the processes. Do you wanna explain how we, how we follow up every year with the? Oh, sure. Income as well as inspections and all of that, briefly?
That really, when we do that, it's really more forgiving.
Oh, that's true.
But we do, actually, we do look at, um, okay, I'm so sorry. So what we do is, um, we look to make sure that what they say is their primary revenue source according to their license, um, they are continuing to function that way, we look at revenue, and then we look at other aspects of the business as well. So if it's a tavern, we look at revenue and make sure that at least fifty percent of their revenue is from the sale of alcohol, um, and then if it's not, if it's creeping up, then we'll go in and, you know, it doesn't look like a tavern, is it functioning like a tavern, and then we'll actually work with the tavern owner and ask them, what things can you do to increase, you know, liquor sales over, you know, gaming or other sales?
There is, so there is, though, with ver- varieties of license, um, categories.
Yeah, so we just did that, we do that each June before liquor renewal, and so the mayor just conducted that.
Okay, thank you. Anything further, Mr. Schmidt?
I think I'm very torn on, on how we approach this, this has the obvious benefit of they want to be here, they want to fill a storefront, and that's a, a very positive thing, but, you know, I think it's, it's always that question of do we want to allow additional liquor stores because they have benefits, but they also have risks, and while I think they, you know, I, I share some of Alvin and the Fox's concerns about, you know, are they, this is how they're pitching it where they're wanting to be, but is that what it remains, and, and to an extent, we have to trust in that. So I think it's just gonna be a difficult thing, and, um, I think advancing makes sense, but it's still something that's gonna require some, some thinking from me at the very least.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing further, roll call please.
Alder Person Sh- I'm sorry, Finch.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt. Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion to advance is approved.
Okay. That concludes our formal business, um, I will try to keep my miscellaneous fairly short tonight and potentially follow up with email in- information, um, because we do have, um, executive session. But, um, today I wanted to let you know that Mr. Lodi and I and Mr. Pear were, or Par were online with the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative, um, they had a follow-up plastic, is Tony here, what the heck, plastic pollution study meeting. Um, the last time we learned about this, and I think Mr. O'Brien sat in on that one, um, last year, they had to, finished all the studies of the Quad Cities itself, and that's where we learned, of course, that plastic is the largest pollutant, mostly cigarette butts, et cetera. But this one, they had done a third phase farther down the river, so they shared a lot of really good information that, of course, during Plastic Free July was, um, very, very helpful, um, and, uh, our working group will, will circle back around the data that they shared and see, you know, what it means for policies or programs that, that we, um, bring to the table. Also, I just wanted to let you all know, I don't know if you were following in the paper or the news cycles about, um, Visi Quad Cities, they're an extremely important partner of ours, they actually have their office in downtown Moline, if you haven't seen it, next to Bass Street Landing, um, they're, um, they were promised five hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funding from Scott County, and that, um, got brought down to a hundred thousand dollars. I do believe that municipalities have, have potentially upped a few, uh, some money toward them, our, our normal fees, I'm sorry, Ms. Barnes, I can't quite remember, but I know no municipalities have given anything out of ARPA to, um, to this entity, to this particular nonprofit that does make a huge difference in the community. Uh, I just offer that as food for thought, um, we know we have lots of budgetary decisions to think about, and we already know we have lots of competing interests, but I just wanted you to know the situation they were in, I sit on that board, um, and so I'm sharing that information. Next week, uh, we're normally scheduled for a roundtable, but we'll be turning that into a regular meeting, so keep that on your calendars, you'll be getting a regular agenda and everything, um, this Friday. And also finally, our next Good Gathering, I mentioned that last month, we, it was right before the last one, this is a little bit of a shorter timeframe, but the, the next Good Gathering is, I sent you the poster at Spring Valley Boardroom, um, folks on the advisory council that live there are extremely excited about it being, um, there, um, and having a chance to offer, um, interaction with new people, so if you're free or you have folks in your ward that really could use that interaction, please send them on out. That is all I have. Ms. Murphy, anything?
No.
Ms. Macias.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, uh, just wanted to mention that, um, we, we had a ribbon cutting with Renew Moline for El Encanto, it's a boot store in the Florissant neighborhood, and it's one that, um, initially, um, I, I got a call last year from the owner, he, because the Sony was residential and it's clearly a little storefront, but I, we all learned that after a year of, you know, of property being vacant, um, that you don't get grandfathered in, and so he had to go to, through this process, and he was very thankful for all the work that we did with the landlord, with the, um, the code and, and just e- everybody at the city, so, uh, I just wanted to share that he was very happy, he's open for business, and, um, and we have a little storefront there, um, near St. Mary's Church across from Carmen Jewelers, so, um, and then finally, um, I won't be here next week, uh, I'll be in Mexico on a beach, so, uh, yeah, sorry, I won't be here. We'll see you on Facebook. Yeah, I'll see you up there.
Mr. Um, Razak, anything from miscellaneous? Mr. Timian?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Finch.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. O'Brien. Nothing, Your Honor.
Castro. Nothing.
Schmidt.
Nothing, Your Honor.
I'm gonna say nothing, I have plans to say later.
All right, all right, so, do we have, um, any public comment now? Nope? Oh, yes, we can point out our interns.
Stand up.
Interns in the executive branch.
We have two interns with us, and, uh, Sam, of course, just joined us on Monday, she'll be working full-time for the next month, and she just recently graduated, uh, from high school, uh, early, and is going to college here locally, I believe, in Iowa, when she's done next year, and she'll be working on, she is actually working on our communications plan, which is long, long overdue, so she has a big heavy lifting project, then Jacob, of course, has been with us for about two weeks now, I think. It's been how long? About a month? Jacob is working on the research related to the solar fund project, so having these interns on board has been really, really, really great, we had one already come and go, was here for two weeks, you know, Said, he was, did a great job when he was here, but he's gone now, but anyhow, we, uh, we're tapping our local young future professionals and, uh, encouraging them to look at local government in the future for a career, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for being here tonight. All right, if there's no public comment, then we move to executive session.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, five ILCS one twenty slash two C one, deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, dash five ILCS one twenty slash two C two, property acquisition, dash five ILCS one twenty slash two C five, pending probable or in imminent litigation, dash five ILCS one twenty slash two C eleven, review of executive session minutes, dash five ILCS one twenty slash two C twenty-one.
Thank you. Thank you.
Second.
Murphy and Schmidt, roll call please.
Alder Person Finch.